Thank you, Alex. So I will call this Board of Selectmen meeting to order March 15th at 7:01 PM. Just going to do a roll call since we're such a small group tonight. Erica Blake.
Jennifer Wang.
Selectman Gill, you are on mute, I believe?
Oh, no, it says I'm not on mute.
Now I can hear you. Okay. And we have town administrator Crusoe. Perfect. So let's start with some announcements. Peter, what do you have for announcements here?
Just that Millville lost a great one. Margaret Carroll passed away. You know, I'm sure by now many people know that. I was fortunate to meet her. She came to visit me very early on when I came to the town and big hug, sweet lady, clearly part of your fabric of your Millville community. And I'm sure many people will miss her passing. So I have that. The other thing is Mike Soder on his sodarep.com. He's working on getting some Easter meals for folks. And so I just, you know, people can find out about that. It's question whether it's a political thing. It's not really. He's really just providing the meals, but he does a lot more for the town as well. So I just point that out.
Yeah, he did that as well last year. I just want to say an official condolence to the Margaret Carroll family. Everybody, I think in Millville knew Margaret and how wonderful she was and everything she did for the town. So deepest condolences from Board of Selectmen. So it's very sad to hear that news. Ninety-seven years young, I believe. Still sharp as a tack. Meeting minutes? I did not see any for March 1st.
Nothing available for March 1st, so.
Okay. We'll deal with that later on. Correspondence, I have none?
Nope.
Okay. I assume there's no Board of Health update or representative here, but Peter, do you have an update from Board of Health that we need to know?
Just that I was fortunate to attend the Uxbridge this morning, a big meeting put on by the local, all of the politicians of the Blackstone Valley. And I guess they call it Lower Worcester region. And there's a Lower Worcester Regional Vaccination Center that's gonna, just been created in Uxbridge. A lot of hard work principally by folks in Uxbridge, but also coordinated with surrounding towns, boards of health and, and their state reps and senators and Congressman McGovern from the federal office. He, his, his representative was there, so they all were all excited about it. Folks to be able to get vaccinated there will have to still go through the state website, make appointments, and that's challenging. Will continue to be challenging. And in addition, the supply of vaccines will continue to be limited. But nonetheless, as the supply grows, presumably the availability through this regional site will be improving as time goes on. It's set to open next week. It'll be open four days a week from eight to noon, I think they said, and then from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So people can get appointments later in the day. Separately, there'll be a Saturday vaccinations in Upton for the same group. People actually from anywhere in the state can sign up for vaccines there, but it is targeted for the local region. And, you know, again, many of their thanks that I would say are deserved to be made to Representative Soder. I think he was one of the key proponents of this whole effort, Senator Fatman. And also basically the leadership of Uxbridge, including the town manager, Steve Setti. He really did a lot of the work to make this happen. So they gave him a nice plaque and, you know, he did a fine job.
Right. So that's at the Old Uxbridge High School, correct?
Yeah, I have the name of it written down somewhere.
Yeah. Most people know it as Old Uxbridge High School.
Yes. Yep.
Good. Thank you for representing Millville today, Peter. Appreciate that.
Sure, I put on a tie and everything. It was great.
There you go. Did you get, did you get a picture with anybody?
I avoided that, thank you.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. Okay. Anything else from Board of Health?
Nope.
Okay, so the next item is the, the election warrant.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't believe Diane's gonna make it, but basically you've seen these before where you have to vote and approve the election warrant. Then all selectmen have to come into the office and sign seven copies of this so it can be posted throughout the town. Those copies are in the top drawer of that cabinet in the foyer.
And what's the deadline on that, Peter? Because we all have to get in there.
Well, the sooner the better. I think the deadline, she has to get it up. Well, I don't know when she's gonna get it up there.
So I believe it's 14 days. Selectman Wang, you're usually better at this.
Seven days is when it has to be before the time of the election.
I give myself seven days cushion, so.
Seven days.
So if we can all get in there and sign that this week, that would be good so they can get those posted in a timely fashion. They're already in the drawer. I've read through the poll. The polls will be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. That's on April 5th, St. Augustine's Church. I don't think we're doing any early voting or anything like that since it's just a town election. So, so we'll get in there and sign this this week. Let me see, do we have to vote on this one?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm looking for a motion for the election warrant signed by the selectmen. Looking for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I, I thought I said aye. I think we did.
Okay. Okay.
I usually raise my hand too, so it's like.
So we'll, I'll get down there and sign that in the next day or two. That would be great. So we can get that out and posted. All right, so we have some new business here. I know we had the appointment to the planning board at our last meeting and we had some clarification questions. Does that all get straightened out, Peter? Seems to be.
Yeah, so he is a resident, he's on the voting rolls in Millville and so an appropriate person to appoint here. And this is the recommended appointee by the planning board for the Board of Selectmen to appoint.
Okay, so I'm looking for an emotion, a motion to appoint Preston Jaskovic to associate planning board member to June 30th, 2021.
I will make a motion to appoint Preston Jaskovic as an associate planning board member through June 30th, 2021.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Preston, for stepping up and filling this position. Peter sent out the preliminary budget fiscal year '22. Peter, I don't know if you want to go through any points on that budget? Anybody has any questions on that budget? I noticed that it's been changed slightly, not so much from our last meeting.
Right, so right now what I'm showing is about a $45,000 deficit based on revenue projections made in this model. And more importantly, the expense, you know, the budgets by department that were requested, most of which I've reviewed and provided recommendations so far, but still some are subject in the 2022 BOS recommended column. I will note that that $45,000 deficit is at least going to change for the fact that I have new information on tri-counties budget needs, which will be favorable to the tune of about $25,000. And on the abatements, I had modified that a little bit. I'm going to modify it again to add $10,000 just to be sure we cover the tax work off program in there. So the net would be just under $30,000 deficit as you see it here with still some items. And that's in the, my column, if you will.
Right.
BOS recommended column. Still some items to be scrubbed further. And, you know, Finance Committee, I went through all this in a similar level of detail as we went through the last meeting for some of the items that I highlighted to you all, I highlighted to the Finance Committee. They're gonna start bringing in people on their next meeting is the 24th. So they'll invite department heads in. Selectmen are, are welcome to attend. I don't know the, what, you know, what the game plan is that the selectmen might want to choose between now and the time that town meeting happens, assuming it happens on May 10th, right? But so there'll be a new board configured presumably that will be voting final approval and so forth. But here's the opportunity for this board to review and weigh in and ask questions as you may wish. Like I say, there's some items that are, you know, up, yet to be finally resolved. Some of the key things, changes to the, you know, to this of note are an increase in the town planner budget by the, about $10,000. A slight increase in the town hall buildings, repairs and maintenance by $4,000, basically to, you know, try to keep ahead of repair needs. The police patrol officer and salaries is budgeted as, as if staffing was there, but if you look at actuals, not full staffing has been, been on the force. So the cost has been less than budgeted, but the positions remain there. Negotiations with the, which we'll talk about later, with the police union are ongoing. There's the, you'll see in the ask of the police department was, or fire department was fire capital public safety equipment. But that's a warrant article from the Capitol Committee, so it doesn't belong in this operating budget. You'll see that BVT, as we know from the meeting with BVT, they're up about 32 grand. They have an additional student and plus increases. We do have a great benefit of BMR's budget this year in terms of what their needs are versus what was, in essence, allowed under the guidance. So their increase is shown here is only, is less than a percent and a half increase.
That was a very nice surprise this year.
Yeah.
Thank you to the BMR for working so hard on that.
Yep. Norfolk Aggies up a student, so that's up, you know, 25 plus grand. Tri-county's going down, so there's a 25 grand savings there. I've put in less than the highway surveyor has asked for and in part because of the deficit we're dealing with and the lack of availability as of today's day to free cash to make that up. So any makeup, to the extent there is, is going to have to come from, you know, a stabilization account, still the same population voting. Streetlights is as if all lights go on and all are converted to the LEDs. So that's in this budget. And so to the extent people want to weigh in, council on aging has an increase in their budget of, you know, fairly substantial if you look at the base numbers. But it turns out in prior years, they used a foundation grant basically every year that they get to pay for a meaningful portion of the senior center director's salary. And that's not what they're asking for this year. They're asking to have the salary come out of the operating budget. I understand the justification for that. It's also helped contribute to the van driver costs as well that they've used that grant for. So they're hoping to use the grant for activity purposes as the grant is generally intended. What else? Library is up by adding back the assistant librarian and some custodial services. So you see an increase there. Debt service is down to the 220 grand. The Worcester County retirement's up nearly 14%. That's a big increase and is painful. And it's, you could argue it's fixed. It's not like there's negotiation of that amount. Try to capture health insurance to provide for the participants identified as well as one additional participant family plan. Because, you know, personnel needs may change over time. Property liability, we had a slight benefit on the cost of insurance for the old town hall and that's reflected in here. So those are the major changes. People did a good job principally trying to follow guidance. Again, as I say, the police department is following guidance for the most part. Certain items, they, you know, have contractual needs that have had some increases. But the union negotiations continue, so that is a bit of an unknown as we sit today.
I have a couple of comments and some questions. First, the schools, the tri-counties, the Norfolk Aggies, just keep an eye, those can fluctuate up until basically the last minute. So we just want to keep that in mind. Unfortunately, there's not a real hard deadline with those, so those can surprise us sometimes in the end.
But those do reflect, those do reflect latest information from the schools.
Right, right. But sometimes, and I'm not sure if the BVT acceptance letters, letters have gone out yet. Sometimes if you have a child that doesn't get into BVT, they may now want to go to Tri-County or, or Norfolk Aggie. And we know that, that's quite a bit of money for the town of Millville. Just keep that in mind that that can swing us quite a bit.
Yep.
What it, what was included, I have it in here somewhere, but I just wanted to make it clear to the townspeople. What did we include for marijuana revenue?
So I included an assumption of a million dollars of revenue and we get a community impact fee of 3%. So $30,000 in the fiscal year of that, plus the 3% sales tax that the, you know, the town has adopted the local option on that. So $60,000 in total for fiscal '22. They have opened their doors, they've commenced operations. I can't speak to level of activity, whether it's high, low, greater than expected or what. But clearly the marketplace is getting saturated with, you know, sites opening in Blackstone sites, you know, in Uxbridge sites, perhaps ultimately in Rhode Island. So it's not the, the be all and end all Nirvana, cover all the needs of the town.
Yeah, I would make a recommendation to check in with over there at the end, after April closed month, before you put the, plug the numbers in to see where they are with the revenue. If it's, this is reasonable or not, whether what we have in our budget's reasonable or not. It might be a good, just little check mark to.
I think we'll have two months of activity that will give, in this fiscal year, that will help, help us project even better. But I prefer to, again, be on the conservative side.
Right.
I've spoken to the owner, you know, I know what their break even number is. And again, I've tried to be conservative.
Right, definitely be conservative. I would agree with that. And did you mention, FinCom is having a meeting on the 24th to have budget departments in?
That's correct. So they'll have their departments like police, like fire, like highway, you know, presumably they're, they're gonna have library in, they'll have council on aging. You know, those are the big hitters that they're likely to have.
So I think we as a board, if we choose to show up or not, we should probably post a meeting for that night. So if we go, go there as a quorum, and I also think it would be a very good idea for the new members that are on the ballot that are running for Board of Selectmen to show up at that meeting to hear what these departments have to say. It's more important that those people are there as well. So if we can just post a meeting, so if we have a quorum, we can be legal beagle. And like I said, I would recommend the people that are desiring to be on the Board of Selectmen be at that meeting as well.
Yep.
So Peter, if you could take care of that posting for us?
Yep.
So, thank you. And that's all my questions and comments on budget. Anybody else?
I don't have any at this time. I looked at the Excel. I think I made it up to line 423 in the tab.
Yeah. So typically I look more at the summary level just because so much changes in the last two months, especially when you start bringing the departments in. They just, things change quite a bit. So for summary level, it's a good start, work to be done. But again, a lot of work will be done over the next month and a half or so.
Yep, so I use the budget history summary, which does list out all of the line items by department. But it's in, you know, on seven pages instead of each of the individual tab. That's what I work with. And then I work with basically the various pages of the budget recapitulation or the summary that gets you to the, you know, the net number. There's a cherry sheet thing, which, you know, I think there might be opportunity there as the state moves forward. Local receipts, there's some opportunity and some, you know, exposure, but that's listed there. There's a bit of other financing sources, not much, but basically it outlines, you know, Septic Title V, how that's treated. There's the taxation summary, it just does the proposition two and a half calculation, basically. It says we have 140 grand to play with to cover the nut if we were to cover the whole nut. And some other, other items. So those are the basic ones. That's my sort of walking package with notes as well as the Excel model itself.
Any other questions, comments on budget? All right. Next item, annual town meeting warrant draft.
Yeah, so what I put together there is basically what I know as of, you know, the latest date of things that will likely be in there, which are the standard items. You see, you know, the first few pages of articles, one through six are always in the annual town meeting. Seven has a placeholder in case the union contract with the police is, needs ratification. Then the capital items that have been voted on, and I even included one that looks like it's gonna go away, so we won't need that. The sweeper, street sweeper, that goes away, but I, at the time of this printing, I had included that. BMR is gonna be providing an article and listed in Article 13 in this draft for school committee stipends, you know, just to conform with what the other town does and what they think is required, which somehow slipped through the cracks over the years. There's one that is in there for the town bylaw elections that the chair had suggested putting back in. You know, the clerk and I put that forward, I think it was a town, a fall town meeting in 19 that didn't quite cut the mustard. But had, had that been approved then, we might be having a different conversation for the, the folks that are gonna come on board, you know, and have to take ownership of all of this budget and so forth.
And I, and I asked Peter to put that one on there. Obviously, once this is finalized, it can be on there or not. But it seemed to make sense as we now are in budget discussions, getting ready to look at budgets. And then we have a change of leadership that's going to happen. So my recommendation was to put this on there, let the townspeople decide. It makes sense to have the elections after you approve budgets, after you approve town meetings. Because we are the people that have been here all year long, discussing it, going through it. So it seems to make sense to have the elections after everything's approved and gone through. So putting it on there, we'll let the townspeople decide as to whether or not it makes sense for them.
Yep.
I got a question on that one and another one. Um, so, because I think we had this on before and Jane Reggio mentioned that someone, I don't know if it's us or Blackstone, has a special rule.
Yeah, so they have a charter. So they're under a charter. So to change the charter for changing, this is not asking to change the election of the school committee. This is asking only to change non-school committee elections, which then raises the question, what would it cost to have a separate school committee election, right?
Right.
Which you could argue the burden would go to the BMR for that. The clerk estimates it's about 3,200 bucks, I think, is what I last saw for the cost of manning an election and, you know, renting the equipment and cleaning the church hall and whatnot. So there's, there is a modest cost to having a separate election for the, the school committee.
Yeah, I also had asked Diane about this question as well when I asked to put this on here. And I know Blackstone had talked about it in the past. And I know the school committee themselves had talked about change in their election because they wanted it later as well. So maybe this is something that may have something that other people will follow suit. But it's, at least it's on there, we can discuss it at town meeting and the townspeople can decide if it makes sense or not. I just wanted a placeholder on there for discussion purposes.
Right, and as you may recall, in the earlier stages of the regional agreement negoti, you know, amendment committee recommendations, early on, they recommended that even though the elections were, remained fixed as the first Monday in April, but that the committee had no voting rights until July 1st or some such thing. I mean, they, they were effectively doing this, but still stay within the charter restrictions of the town of Blackstone. So, so they were amenable to the concept. It's just, you know, form of getting there, not substance.
Right. Again, I think it's one of those things that needs to be talked about, needs to be decided upon with the town. And maybe it wouldn't even change the school committee's date as well as Blackstone, because I know that they're in the same boat that we are. So at least we have it on there as a placeholder for discussion.
Right.
Makes sense. And then the other question I had, Peter, was Article 9, so the police car, because that was 3-3 by the Capitol Planning Committee. And so I know the Board of Selectmen, we would have to vote to put that on there, so. Not what else.
So that's, so that's more, it's a placeholder, it's for discussion. Clearly Capitol Program Committee did in fact do that 3-3. So it's a little, it's unclear whether that goes on or not. But again, you're, the Board of Selectmen makes the final.
Sounds good.
Yep. Yep. I had, I put a placeholder for zoning bylaws to the extent there were any recommended changes. I'm not aware of any. I put a placeholder for cable appropriations because the town accountant has his knickers in a twist about something there, but I don't fully understand it. So I'm hoping that he'll provide the right wording reviewed by council that we might need there. Separately, I have to be determined whether there'll be anything for funding OPEB's capital stabilization, general stabilization.
Okay.
And I know of no others, nobody's put forth anything specific from, you know, but the warrant remains open, so.
Did you give a deadline for that, Peter? I can't remember.
You know, I, for them to return me back, no, I think I said deadline will be forthcoming, you know?
Okay. Okay.
So it's still a little ambiguous enough to be, somebody could make the argument if they want it loud enough.
Okay. Any other discussion on the warrant? Next item, 2019 final audit report Peter sent along to us to review.
Now that made for exciting reading, I hope, for all of you.
I did skim through it, actually. Yeah, so I just want to say thank you, Peter, for pointing out and making sure there were some comments in there for OPEB.
Yes.
That OPEB liability has me very concerned. The deficit on that is mounting and we really, really need to start considering funding that a little more appropriately. And that's my comment on, on the audit.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the page 58, they call it subsequent events. Where, and I drafted that, that part of that footnote regarding BMR's outstanding unfunded liabilities of regular debts, 3 million. Unfunded OPEBs as of June 30th, 1933 million. Unfunded pension obligation at BMR for the non-teachers is 8 million. And I always find it very interesting, and that's why I included this language that the auditors provided the numbers for, the unfunded pension obligation on behalf of BMR teachers. But it's at the state, it doesn't come out of your, you know, your property tax pocket. It comes out of your sales tax and your state income tax pocket. But in any event, that's a $39 million unfunded nut as of June 30th, 19. And the state made a contribution on behalf of those teachers of nearly $4 million. So those are big numbers of debt that this little community, these two communities have created that, you know, somebody has to pay at some point. So it's always one of my hot buttons.
I don't know how other communities handle this. So, I mean, certainly those numbers are big and we should have it funded better than we do. And I'm wondering, are other communities looking like Millville or are the communities?
So this is, yeah, so again, this is BMR. This isn't Millville specific. If Millville specific, our OPEB liability is about 600,000. Right now the town's got 140 grand put away. So compared to some other communities, that's pretty reasonably, you know, that's a reasonable coverage of that. I think the reality is BMR, you know, is challenged for this. They're putting in, not in the budget this year, but to be paid out of their E and D, which is the equivalent of our free cash, $50,000 is a contribution. So they've finally, a little, tasted a little blood, they're actually doing something about it. In reality, that liability they have increases. In reality, that liability they have increases by fifty thousand every two weeks. So, uh, it's not, you know, it, it wouldn't satisfy me if I were the one being satisfied on that.
This would have been a great year for BMR to plump that up a bit, since their budget came in lower than expected or, or asked. So this would have been a great year for them to kind of plump up that line a little bit. But we'll see, we'll see what the budget brings.
Yeah, so other towns are struggling, you know, the, the, the larger communities, uh, you know, the cities and all that do a lousy job of funding their OPEBs. Some communities, like even Blackstone, from talking to Keys before he left, I mean, he's pretty well-funded on his OPEBs, he's, he's way ahead of the curve compared to many other communities. Um, I had a friend who, uh, a former colleague who, uh, was the executive director in Wellesley, and I grew up in Wellesley, so I pay attention to it. He, he was big on this, cause he came from the same kind of training that I do. And, uh, so he got theirs fully funded ten years ago. So there, he was way ahead of the curve, but they were putting three million bucks away every year to do that. It's real money.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that Blackstone, you know, has their power plant.
That's right.
They, they have that money, and they have the highest tax rate in the valley. So.
I guess I should have asked the question a little differently, are other school systems or school districts have similar obligations, or are we an anomaly? I guess I'm just wondering how much of an outlier we are, not that I don't think we should, you know, I do think we should be trying to reduce this number and things like that. But I'm wondering if we're kind of cruising along with the crowd and everyone's doing this.
Yeah, I would let them speak to that, I know that my Sherburne residency days and activities, uh, Dover Sherburne was also very remiss in their OPEB funding. I don't know what they're like these days, but they certainly were. So, on these financials, just I'll point out a couple of things, if you looked at the actual statements, page thirteen is really the GAAP equivalent, where it's trying to do a accrual basis accounting of your balance sheet, which factors in your assets, your fixed assets, you know, land, buildings, equipment, and depreciates it, and it also shows your liabilities, uh, like your OPEBs, like your town's unfunded pensions. Like, uh, one of the other ones that stood out is your, uh, your, uh, what is it, the landfill closure, post-closure care costs, so your landfill. They accrued three hundred and thirty grand there as what the obligation of the town is over the next fifteen or twenty years to continue to monitor ta- and test the capped landfill, uh, behind the salt chip. So, you know, there's, that's a cruel basis, and then on page sixteen is really the government or the fund accounting, that's what Millville daily books would show, and it shows your general account, your Title V, uh, separate accounts, and today's numbers instead of six hundred and fifty-three is fund balance, it's, uh, seven hundred and eighteen as of June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty, so that keeps going up. Uh, has a bunch of other funds sort of combined together. Um, noteworthy is, of course, the cash number, um, of three point seven million bucks as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. You know, a million, three of that is the Title V and the, uh, y- you know, the, uh, uh, non-operating funds. The balance is, uh, the cash and short-term investments, which includes, you know, at that point, you had your, stabilization funds and your OPEB funds, so that, you know, there's a million bucks of that is really not liquid, if you will. And then the balance of a million plus, you can, we can burn that up in a check, uh, you know, a bill, an invoice from BMR is, you know, bordering on seven hundred grand, so you know, writing that check takes that balance down pretty quickly, so. It sounds like a lot of cash, some of it's segregated. I am trying to get the Title V stuff freed up. Uh, still working with, uh, DLS on that, um, which may give us favorable news on, um, free cash as well. But more to follow, more to be determined.
Peter, on the free cash, I know you've been going back and forth with that discrepancy. Is that something that you think's going to be settled before budgets or, and/or town meeting?
Yeah, I think it'll be, we'll know, we'll have some certainty. And actually, I'm gonna push for that, because to the extent that they don't decide that it's transferable to a free cash equivalent, then my plan B is to do some sort of, uh, uh, warrant article to move the, what I call the excess monies that have, some portion of the excess monies accumulated to stabilization by way of a warrant article. And there's a Plan C and maybe a Plan D as well, yet to be
Right.
sort of fleshed out.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's gonna be a, an important target to watch.
Yes, oh yeah, it's very important, now, so it's in the hands. Uh, been run up the flagpole and is now with, uh, Andrew Nelson, you know, who's the regional lead of DLS for Millville. Um, he's, you know, I think probably looking back at some prior years' information from which to make a more definitive decision on things.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so the last thing is, page twenty shows your budget to actuals, which shows, that really gives you a good sense of how typical free cash is created, it's created by way of your revenues come in better than you anticipated in your, your annual budgeting modeling, as well as your expenditures have turnbacks in various line items and net-net, in this particular case of that fiscal year before land sales, you, operating, uh, free cash generation, if you will, or operating surplus was a hundred and forty-three thousand bucks. So I'm just trying to give you, you know, sort of a highlights of the things that are important. There's a lot of words that, you know, for folks, it's on the we- it's on the town website. People wanna read it, there's, it leads in with management discussion and analysis, which tries to, you know, I find confusing to read, but it tries to make sense of what you're about to read. And then you read it, you look at those statements and you scratch your head, which one is that, which one, you know? Um, and then you get into the footnotes, which are where the real good stuff is in terms of trying to understand how things are, you know, how the things are accounted for by the town and the various statements, so. And then at the end, they have some, uh, some of the town's OPEB stuff uh, and pension information that's in schedules that are unaudited, but, uh, do provide some good information, so. Anyway.
And, like you said, it is on the website, and people may think we have a ton of money in the bank when they look at the balance sheet, but just keep in ba- in mind, the balance sheet's just a snapshot, it's like taking a picture of your second account on a Friday when you get paid, but the bills haven't posted yet, so just keep in mind.
That's right.
Well. Any other discussion or questions on audit?
I've got a couple of questions, so, on page forty-three, note seven, financing. So it said we have no short-term debt activity for the year thirty of twenty nineteen, but have we ever used that in the past?
I don't know, like bond anticipation notes and things, so if we were to go out, so let's say the town borrowed money to build a town hall or a deep, you know, the garage, for example, and we went, we got approval to do long-term fi- debt financing, you know, and, and decided to do bond anticipation notes, short-term debt before, uh, going out to actually bonding it. And, uh, you know, the treasurer presumably would be a better expert on the process, but, um, you know, some communities, like in, I live in Situate, and Situate always seems to have ten million dollars of bond anticipation notes. And so all the town's doing is paying the interest on that. So in my mind, it's really cheating, it's not showing the true debt service costs that should be budgeted. And so they should be bundling their bond anticipation notes and actually going to bond, long-term bond, and then paying the debt service down over fifteen, twenty, thirty years, whatever it may be.
Situate probably has that an actual bond rating, unlike Millville, so.
That's correct, yeah. So what, what you don't see, like in our operating budget, is any, uh, debt service for the, um, the new boiler at BMR. You know, that won't hit, I think, until twenty-three. It will, all of a sudden, we'll have a bump in the debt service budget line item. Because we'll be having to pay debt service down on that.
Um, and then my last comment was, I, there's a typo at the bottom of page six. So I was reading this, so it's the very last sentence. It says, "Non-current liabilities within the governmental activities include three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and ninety-four million dollars." So I was guessing it wasn't three hundred and seventy billion dollars, because that would, that would be very scary for Millville.
That's, you're right, there's a good typo, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
I see that.
Good one. We can have Bob Brown come in and walk through, if you wanna have a, you know, the board, maybe the next board wants.
Nice to do that with the fire committee.
Yeah, I think, that, yeah, so he's, he's ready, willing and able to come in and talk about this in greater detail to the, as, in as much detail as anybody wants.
Peter, they had always come in to do a presentation, and I've never gotten an audit without a presentation. So that may be useful to have, and I think that does clarify things for the layman who's at home who might have read it, but don't know all the ins and outs, and hearing it from the professionals might be good.
Right, I agree.
So it's good that it's on the website now, maybe scheduling a meeting, give people a chance from the town to read it, having a public forum for questions, I think that's probably a great idea considering some transparency issues we may have had in the past.
Right. And they have yet to issue their, uh, management letter. Uh, haven't seen a draft yet. Um, so I think once they do that, then they would be, that would be the time to bring them in to talk through this as well as the management letter. So you really got this hot off the presses, and we put it right up on the website, once they issued the electronic version of this.
Right, good. Anything else on audit from anyone? All right, next item, we have a resignation, um, Mary Govan from the Historical Commission. I don't, um, I, I didn't see anything official in our packet, so we have anything official?
Diane has it too, yeah, so she has that, yeah. I don't know that I have her little piece of paper, she does.
All right, it says resignation immediate, do we have a date on that, or?
Uh, in fact, it came from Diane, uh, March ten, so.
You know, I'm lying, I see, it was, it was, it was cop- it was with some other stuff.
Yep.
I just found it.
Yep.
So we're looking for a motion from, yeah, from Mary Govan, um, to resign from the Historical Commission effective immediately. Um, it's an unexpired three-year term with a vacancy expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Mary Govan from the Historical Commission, which leaves a vacancy with an expiration date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
And I'll second that with regret, cause she's been on there for a while, and I appreciate her service.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you for your service, Mary. Next, um, item is appointment of Diane Hadley to the Historical Commission. Looking for a motion.
I will make a motion to appoint Diane Hadley to the Historical Commission for a term that expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, welcome aboard, Diane. Do we have any old business?
No, kind of bundled in the new.
Okay. Um, Alex, do we have anybody on for public forum?
No public forum comments at the moment.
Okay. So now we'll go to selectmen's reports. Anybody have anything? Okay, the only thing I have, um, I asked Andrew to have all of the executive session meeting minutes ready for us for tonight's meeting. Um, I have not received them as of yet, so I think we're gonna have to schedule one more meeting of this board as an executive session, um, to review and sign off on those meetings before the board changes. At the end of this meeting, we will, um, make a date for that. Um, town administrator report?
No, I, you know, I covered most everything that I wanted to cover.
Okay.
In the body.
So I assume you don't have any other items, forty-eight hour items?
No.
So the next regular scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Peter's gonna have a meeting posted for March twenty-fourth in conjunction with FinCom, in case there is a, uh, quorum. And actually, why don't we pick our executive session meeting date now to do the meeting minutes, since we don't have them as of yet?
I guess March thirty-first, there's a Capital Planning Committee meeting.
Okay.
So I don't know if you wanna avoid that date, but other than that.
Yeah.
And I don't think I can, you go, I don't think I need to be available anyway, cause I can't vote on anything.
Yeah, that's true.
So I think you're either the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth.
So why don't we say the twenty-ninth, that'll give Andrew an extra week to write them if he needs to. The twenty-ninth at seven P M. And I will reach out to him to let him know to make sure it's, uh, if he's good with that meeting night.
What time is that?
Seven P M, is that good with you, Alex?
That works.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a Monday?
It is, is that okay?
Yeah, no, it's fine, I just, I can't pull up my calendar for some reason.
Okay, two weeks from today.
Thank you.
Do that, just an executive session, we'll book that one for. And Selectman Gil, you're optional on that one, since you won't be able to vote on anything, so we might give you the night off, unless you wanna come and hang out.
I have nothing else to do, which might be true.
And that's for B O S?
Yes. Actually, um, well, we have a, we'll have other meeting minutes to sign. So maybe we'll do an open meeting for the remaining meeting minutes of the board of selectmen, then we'll go into executive session, I'm making this complicated now, to sign off all of executive session meeting minutes.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to start an open forum regardless, so.
Right, 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 so, I just want that on the agenda.
So I'll have tonight's minutes and March first minutes available.
Exactly.
Yep.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
I just can't give up the spot, you know, I just wanna keep meeting with you guys.
Right in, right in, right in.
You know, you didn't pay for that spot, by the way.
Yeah.
All right, so I think that's all we had before we enter an executive session. So if anybody wants to.
Do the public forum, did you, did I miss that?
We did, nobody was here to listen to us, anybody there, Alex?
I'll refresh, but I don't think so.
No kidding.
Nope, nope.
I gotta go have birthday cake with my son, can you tell him?
Oh, you gotta go, yeah. And I'll be brief when we get into executive session.
That's fine, that's fine, no rush.
One last question again, would be April sixth, what time and what, which, uh?
Seven P M usually.
So that'll be the board of selectmen, it'll be a new board of selectmen on, uh, on April sixth, we'll have it at seven P M unless uh, otherwise noted, Alex, and, uh, I will lead off the meeting, and then the first item will be for the new board to reconfigure itself, and they'll elect a chair and a secretary and a, you know, vice chair and that sort of thing.
All right.
At least that's how I anticipate it will go. And we'll probably have same, very similar, you know, warrant article budget types of items on the agenda.
So I will remind the election winners, the elections on Monday, first meetings on Tuesday, you need to get sworn in before the meeting, so you can vote on items, so plan accordingly with Diane to get sworn in immediately.
Yep. Good stuff.
Okay, so would anybody like to, um, unless Alex, you have anything else tonight, you're chatty.
No, no, I'm good, no more questions.
All right, we're gonna let you go in a minute, once we do our last little thing here. Um, I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session, we'll only need to read uh, the first one, cause we're not going to be doing B. So looking for fourteen. So looking for fourteen A, please.
I will move that the board of selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C thirty, A twenty-one, A three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Union Local one-seventy, Town of Millville Police Officers.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, roll. Jennifer Gil?
Jennifer Wang, aye.
Erica Blake, aye. All right, Alex, you can hand the reins over to me, we'll stop recording, and you can have the rest of the evening to yourself, sir, thank you very much.
Thanks.